And you know, the beginning, which is the most difficult time, and as soon as they can stabilize, we we give this, give the schools back to themselves. And so it's kind of a wonderful experience, and that's expanded to other charities that I've been involved in. I've been a longtime advocate of the university here and been on many of its boards and appreciate my time there.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have three minutes. Please introduce yourself to the public.
Okay, my name is David Palacios. I'm a Carbon County native. I've been here my entire life, except for the twenty years that are twenty-two years I spent in law enforcement and in Colorado. Born and raised here, family's been here for three generations. They were immigrants from Mexico on both sides of my family and coal miners. So I have a history steeped in in the area in coal mining and in the energy industry. Like I said, my family's been here for a long time. I've been here for a long time. The experience I've gained over the years of my life have kind of led me here. I've I've been in the service industry for as long, well, for my entire life. I started working in an electric motor shop. I worked for Joy Manufacturing. I became a police officer, served the public for twenty years there. After that, I was picked up by Savage and and worked with them for nineteen and a half years. And during that time, I was a manager at the coal service operation in Wellington. And when I they Savage was a great company, they let us as managers run the businesses the way we wanted, as long as we were doing fine, and they would check on you and make sure everything was going good. So during that time, I supported a lot of causes here in Carbon County. We we supported a lot of baseball teams, senior events, kids' events, baseball teams, junior jazz, all that stuff. We just did all that kind of stuff, and I and I enjoyed that. And Savage would allow us to do that when we had the the funds to do that, which we did most of the time. So from there and and with them, I've I've had years of training of leadership. They're really big into that at Savage. They provide all the leading, all the leadership training that you need. We had a program that was called Hire Right, Train Right, and Treat Right, which is just how people should be dealt with when they come into a new company like ours. So I did that for nineteen and a half years, and then I retired from Savage. April the second was my very last day there. And I'm the kind of guy that can't sit still. I enjoyed my my no having to be nowhere retirement for two whole days. And then I just, I just couldn't not do it anymore. So I'm the kind of person that has to be doing something that will benefit somebody or something. And my neighbor was telling me, he says, why don't you go drive a school bus? And it's like, well, that sounds like a lot of fun. So I've been doing that as a substitute bus driver now for a few months, and I've and I've really enjoyed that. So it's been a lot of fun. And the school district is wonderful to me. They're great. It's a great organization to work for. So I think being from here is is important. Raised here is important. Being here in the energy industry, I believe, is important. Having the business knowledge that I have, managing budgets and people has just, I think, makes me suited for this job.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Moving on to our first question, Mr. Palacios, we will again have you start with this one first. After reviewing the county financials, what is the most alarming thing that you have found? What would you do to change it? You have two minutes.
Well, let's see. After looking at some things, it's an interesting budget, and I'll tell you why. It's a little bit different than what I'm, it's a Savage was a for-profit budget, which is very different than the county's budget. So it took me a few minutes to kind of, just kind of look at it and see where things were at. But I think the county is in fairly good shape right now with the money that they have in the coffers. I think it's it's a benefit to the county right now. The things that I would kind of look at is, of course, would be the property taxation values. That was a big issue over this past year, and I get asked that a lot about what goes on there. The money that's been spent to kind of correct things there. So I've been asked that a lot, so that would be something that I would be interested in researching. The other part is, is I didn't really see anything too far out of line. So it was, it was interesting to, and I'm still studying that, and I'll have to be honest with you. I just don't know it completely. But it I just, what I looked at was, and it makes more sense to me every time I look at it. But looking at it from a, from a distance right now, I'd say the assessor's office, the money that was spent there. And I think really that's all that's caught my eye right now, so.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll have, you also have two minutes. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Nope, I'm good. I think, I think the same, same budget, budgetary issues were with the assessor this year and the extra costs that were associated. We had to hire extra staff to help fulfill that position. And I think that's the area that was most alarming, but at the same time, it was essential because if that's out of whack, then it throws all the property values out of whack.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
You know, I think, just in addition to what I've already said, I think learning the budget is important, obviously, and that, and I have been studying that. There's a, the different departments that go on here. Said it's a little different than just managing a coal yard. It's a little more, a little more detailed than that. But looking at all the different departments, I was fascinated by everything that goes on here. I I've never really taken a deep dive into it. And and when I did this last one, it was just, it was fascinating at, at all the departments that we have in this county and what we do, and I would love to be a part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll also have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
Yes, I understand that the importance of looking over budgets is there's also an interpretation between those budgets. It's not just about the numbers. And I think that's important to recognize in, in just looking at the numbers for the number's sake.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. We'll start with you on this next question. After reviewing the county budget and fiscal plans, tell us about your next four-year plan for the county. Also, what is your plan for communicating with your constituents that you have accomplished this plan? And what are your mile markers along the way? You will have two minutes.
Well, for one, I understand that our our overall, well, property taxes are the biggest thing. Everybody's concerned about it and rightfully so. We we bring in, and the county needs about twenty-eight million, two-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars with some change every year in order to operate. There's many taxing entities as part of that. County is a very small fraction of that, sometimes twenty percent in the municipal and closer to thirty in the, in the unincorporated areas. But what's important to understand is the budget that we can control, which is the county. I think understanding those, those values is, and making sure those values are correct are, are, is my greatest priority. Because that that was the real reason that I've, I've worked so hard on on this campaign is because I've, I feel like there's a way that we can help, help, help with our budgetary issues. Because I, I, I think that we, I know in past years that we had all these hopes of the mineral lease money that was coming in and hoping that would, that would pad our budgets. We had a lot of money coming in from the centrally assessed tax, you know, entities. And then all of a sudden, as we've lost those jobs, there's been that, that big shift to the locals. And that's why we're all filling it now. And nobody's felt that more than I have on, on, on our properties. And so I'm, I'm very aware of that. And that's the thing I would like to target is to try to see how we can transfer some of that money back to the centrally assessed. And I think that has to do with economic development. And I think they're already working on a few projects that will help to create that. And then the milestone is, is I think we should have a five, ten-year plan that we can prepare everybody in the society to, you know, to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have two minutes. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
After reviewing the county budget and fiscal plans, tell us about your next four-year plan for the county. Also, what is your plan for communicating with your constituents that you have accomplished this plan? And what are your mile markers along the way? You will have two minutes.
Okay, first, I think for, for a goal of mine as a commissioner in the first term is going to be learning everything I can about what goes on in the county, learning the departments that I'd be in charge of and, and getting that done. And try to, try to make sure everybody's has what they need and that we're, everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing. So also, as part of that, I think the county can probably grow some, but I think it has to be controlled growth, and it has to be done at a fifty-thousand-foot view to make sure that it's going to match everything else that we're doing here in the county. We want to be careful with growth. But it's like, it's been mentioned already, it's, it's, we have to be careful here because we, we've, we're kind of, we're kind of in a spot where we, we need to just kind of be really careful about how we plan for the future. But that's part of my plan is to see what we can do, and that could be a number of things. You know, there's a lot of talk about looking at businesses to come to the county to help. And and I think we have to be a little selective about that as well. You know, I'm an energy guy, so I'm, I'm kind of, my whole world is not that, of course. As a commissioner, it would not be all energy, but that is a consideration for Carbon County. We've been in Energy County, and we're surrounded by Energy Counties for a long time. So I think there's some growth opportunities there. I don't believe coal is going away anytime soon. We have mines open here, the mines that are open here, although they're not in Carbon County, are producing coal. The people that haul that coal and mine that coal and work in the service industry live in Carbon County for the most part. So we have that as well, the service industry and all that. So, so that's a part of our growth. We need to kind of maintain that and, and make sure that that grows as well as other things. As far as talking to constituents, I'm the kind of guy that's very social. I will be out there, I've done a lot of that lately. I'll be out there, and people will see me and know who I am.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Palacios, you will also have the option for an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
Okay, and just to finish up the question as, as a marker for me, I, there, this is kind of a personal thing for me, and I would set personal goals for myself that I would want to be in this spot by this time. Like initially, I want to be able to, in the first year, I think it'll take a year, to just learn everything that goes on in the county. When I went from truck driver to manager at Savage, it took me every bit of a year to, to learn their budgets and their systems and all that stuff. And it's not that I'm a slow learner, I'm just very meticulous about what I learn. So, so I think that's where the final part of the question is, is it that, that first part for me, it'd be the first year. I'd like to be in that spot. The year after that, I'd like to make sure that the county is solvent and we're still going the way we need to go.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. But for those of us who are, for those of you who are just joining us, again, we'd like to remind you that you are listening to Meet the Candidates. Today, we're talking to Carb, candidates for Carbon County Commissioner Jared Haddock and David Palacios. Over this hour, they're going to be answering questions that were emailed in by the public. If you want to get involved in future Meet the Candidate events, you can email election2024@koal.net. Again, that is election, not elections. If you are just joining us, we are now going, moving on to our next question. We'll start with you on this one, Mr. Palacios. Can you speak on any interactions that you've had, both positive and negative, with government organizations on the local, state, or federal levels? And how have these influenced your, your decision to run? You'll have two minutes.
Okay, locally, you know, I've been here a long time. I'm familiar with the law enforcement people around here. I know some people from the municipalities. I know some people from county government. Everything that I've been involved with here locally has been, has been very positive for me. Meeting the people from the different municipalities and then also being involved with law enforcement around here because we work together with those a lot, and that's both at the state level and the federal level with the Department of Transportation. Especially here in Utah, we had a lot of issues with the trucking industry here that we've really worked hard to try to get resolved, and, and they've been great. There's some things that they just can't do, but there's some things that we've asked them to do. The, the, the upgrade on Highway six and Highway one ninety-nine, that came at a request from many people to try to fix that before something disastrous happened there. So working with other entities in the government has been really easy for me since I've kind of been doing that for a long time anyway, even as a law enforcement officer. I worked with the FBI, the ATF, the Colorado Bureau of Investigations. We did some undercover drug operations together. And so I got along good, great with all those guys. And I think as far as being able to get along and move with other entities, I, I think I'm very well capable of doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you also have two minutes. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good, thank you. Yeah, so it started out with a lady who came and asked me to, she says, I, I struggle to continue to pay my taxes or to pay my medicine. And that was before I realized there were some abatements and circuit breakers that were available to, to people like that. But it just was reminiscent of how serious this, the situation was. So that's what, that's what got me started. And then after that, I've spent a lot of time, I go to every county commissioner meeting. I used to just watch them, and then I found it was much more helpful to actually be at present and to fill the energy and to understand what's going on, to really educate ourselves on what's really happening in the area. And I've been, and since then, we've also been part of Government Days, which I thought was quite fun. It's part of Eastern Leaders Academy, which we're also a part of. And we're able to interact and meet with every department in, in our government that, you know, that has, that has an impact in our area. And it is neat to just find out how we all are trying to work for the common good.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you'll have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
Okay, and as far as comments to me, negative or positive, it, it's kind of been a wash for both. I mean, like I said, we've talked about the, the taxation here and people, that's a big concern, as we've already mentioned. And other things around, you know, as, as school bus drivers, they're saying the roads, the roads are awful. And, and there's parts where, you know, you, you get shook around in a bus when you go over these roads. So, so that's just something to talk about. But it's, it's, like I said, again, it's never been anything horribly negative. I've always considered myself kind of a, a positive outlook person and, and try to remain that way. Although, you know, it, sometimes you can't be that way all the way either. So, so it's just, it's been kind of a mix, a good mix of both.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you will also have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
I, I agree that there was, there's a lot of positive and negative, and I find that there's far more positive than negative.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. We'll start with you on this next question. Many citizens view the office of commissioner as a full-time job. How many hours do you plan on spending in the office if elected? You'll have two minutes.
Forty hours.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, same question for you. You will have two minutes. Would you like me to repeat it?
Uh, no, I think I can get that one. So I, I retired, April second was, was the last day that I worked a full-time job. So and I, so because I became bored with that, I started working a couple of part-time jobs, right? So that kind of kept me entertained. But both of the employers that I've, I've gotten with today, I've told them explicitly, if I get elected, I will not have another job. I want to be a full-time commissioner. I think that's important, and that's not being critical of anybody that's in office right now. That's just the way I see things, and, and that's what's important to me. I think I need to be there, I need to be out there. And so I will be a full-time commissioner. Maybe it's forty hours a week, maybe it's sixty hours a week. It does, it will not matter to me. I, I will be available. My last employer, they almost had my phone stitched to my head so that I would always have it with me. And that's kind of what I've gotten used to, is, is just making sure that I can communicate, make sure I'm available. Because, because some, if, if you've gotten, I've learned that if you have a need and, and you can't get anybody to help you, that's horrible. That's a horrible spot to be in. It's like when you call on your insurance claims and all you get is voice recordings. That drives me nuts, and it's important that people talk to a person. So I will be completely dedicated to the job, and I, and I look forward to that because it, I know it'll be a challenge, but I really look forward to that. I, I, I love a good challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
Yeah, I, I just think that nobody will ever be able to do this without a, be in a full-time position.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have an additional sixty seconds if you would like.
I don't think I have anything else to add to that.
All right, moving on to our next question then. We'll start with you on this one, Mr. Palacios. What steps have you taken to learn about the position of commissioner? You'll have two minutes.
Okay, as, as I've, I've mentioned, I think my entire life has, has dropped me in this spot right now, and, and I'll tell you why. It's, I've been in the service industry my entire life. I think being a, a county commissioner is, is also a service job. You're here to serve the public and serve their needs. And I have done that for fifty years completely. Started it in the mining industry, went to law enforcement, started back in the mining and transportation industry. So I, I, I just believe that everything that I've done in my life, and also, you know, as, as far as local stuff, you know, I've, I've watched the, the commission meetings and tried to understand what's going on there. Those have been good to watch. Talking to people, campaigning is one thing, and, and deciding to run for county commissioner is the other thing that I've done to, to prepare myself for this. And so, but, but in the meantime, like I said, I've been talking to a lot of people. I've been out there doing meet and greets and just taking a lot of phone calls, taking a lot of emails. And so I think the, the bottom line is, is everything that I've done in my entire life has led me to this spot here, which I think will make me an effective commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you will also have an addition, or two minutes. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I've got it, thank you. So like I said, I've attended every, every commissioner meeting, and that has been very helpful. Didn't realize how valuable that was until I started attending, especially in person, which was just, just, just helpful. It's still good to watch them on video, but it's a little bit different. You feel the energy a little bit, and you can kind of ask questions after about things that you just didn't understand. So sometimes it can bring up some of those questions. But otherwise, I've spent a fair amount of time in, in, in meeting not just with a lot of our government officials here, but also in the state level. And I found that each one of them had a different perspective of our situation in our area. And in fact, I, I, I think I found as much value in working with the state auditors on some of our, of some of our issues here. It just kind of helped me to visualize the, the, the full circle, what, the, the way to move forward in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will have an additional sixty seconds if you would like.
Ah, I don't, I think I, I won't need that, thank you.
Mr. Haddock, you will also have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
I'm good, thank you.
Moving on to our next question then, we'll start with you on this one, Mr. Haddock. How will you promote transparency in county government and making sure that the residents are informed and involved in the decision-making process? You'll have two minutes.
Well, thank you for that question. That is a very important question because, as I had been saying in our primary, in primary elections, my biggest thing was being able to have a ten, five-year and an annual plan for, for where we're headed, as, not as a county. And I think helping other people to see that vision will not, it'll take some of the shock away from, you know, decisions that might have to be made in five years. We can see those coming if we, if we have a plan for those. And I know that they're, they're working on those plans now, but that's something that I would like to, to help improve. And I, and I think that having weekly, you know, updates on, on decisions that are being made and why they're being made, I think are very important. You know, part of, part of where I stand is just, you know, Republican at least me, to me means to return to the public, right? In, in my mind, it, it just means that we want to be able to, that they're part of the process, right? And I, I mean, and it'd be nice to just have them make all the decisions, but then there'd be no need for a commissioner. But sometimes a commissioner, what we do is, is you would be doing a lot of the hard work. It's like climbing up the hill to see if, when the enemy approaches, right? You know, you, you have a different perspective. But you have, it's a lot of work to get to that, to the top of that hill. And so hopefully, we help protect people after putting our work in, to help them to see the dangers and challenges that are coming ahead. And I think a one-year, five-year, and a ten-year plan would help to fulfill that.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have two minutes to answer the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
Please.
How will you promote transparency in county government and making sure that residents are informed and involved in the decision-making process? You have two minutes.
Okay, so I'm the kind of person that's always been available all the time. My last nineteen and a half years have been answer your phone, answer these questions, be open. And, and for that industry, that, that's perfect. And I think as a county commissioner, I think you can, you can be that way as well. I think I can be, actually, I know I'll be available. I'll have my phone, that's why I've always published my email address and my phone number in all my campaign ads. Everybody knows how to get ahold of me, and, and that's important. It's like I've already said, if you can talk to a human, that's perfect. Now, if you can get a voice to somebody that's listening to you, and, and maybe it'll take five minutes, maybe it'll take an hour, maybe it'll take two hours. But I want to spend that time, and I want to make that time, and I will make that time, to make sure that people understand what's going on in our government. Now, and I understand that there's some things that they just, they just can't do, maybe personnel issues or something like that, that you can't really be too transparent with for, for lots of reasons. But most things I think in, in county government should be available to the public when it's practical, of course. And so part of my, part of my philosophy is that, that I would make myself available. If somebody has a question, come and see me, call me, let's go to your house, let's go to my house, let's go get a cup of coffee or whatever. And I will be happy to spend some time with you, and I think that's important, to, to have somebody to talk to and speak to. And as far as, as, as getting that out to people, I think part of my campaign has already done that. People know that I'm available, and, and I think that's been proven already too, because I get a lot of phone calls for that kind of stuff and emails, so.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll have an additional sixty seconds if you would like it.
I, no, I'm good. I, I agree with Dave on that.
Mr. Palacios, you will also have an additional sixty seconds if you would like.
I agree with Mr. Haddock's agreement.
Moving on to our next question then. Whereas President Biden signed an executive order, AKA Thirty by Thirty, in January of 2021 that calls for thirty percent of all public lands to be administered under conservation management rather than multiple-use sustained yield management, what can you, as Carbon County Commissioner, do to protect our economy, mineral extraction, energy production, historical farm ranch lifestyles, livestock grazing on public lands, timber harvesting, watershed protection, and motorized mechanized recreation? Mr. Palacios, we'll start with you on this one, and you will have two minutes.
That's a lot of stuff, right? So, so our, our lands are important to us, there's no doubt about it. Our, our recreation lands, our, our farming lands, all that stuff is very important. And that is a huge deal for Carbon County because of, because of where we're situated and where we're at. So it's important to, to try to protect those. I'm not, you know, there, there's always a, a big deal about should the federal government do it or should the state of Utah do it? And that's a question I can't answer right now because I think there's pros and cons to both sides, right? I think, I think as far as mineral, mineral extraction goes, the federal government has control over that, and they're not always, in my mind, not fair with mineral extraction right now in, in the current Washington administration. So that part I struggle with because it's, it's, it's important. Energy is important, as we've already talked about. Our fossil fuels are important, and, and we're just not going to be able to manage without them as, as far as I can see. My dad was a coal miner for forty years, and he would always tell me, you're never going to see the end of coal even in your lifetime, which would be my lifetime, and, and I believe that. So we want to make sure that, and some of the mining companies have been really good with this stuff. They've been really good to protect their leases and to make sure that they have their leases, and, and they've done some really cool things with that. I'm not privy to a lot of it, but some of it that I've heard has been really cool, the maneuvers that they've made to keep their coal leases, especially at Lila Canyon. As far as the, the state government goes, we have, you know, this is a recreation area, there's no doubt about it. I hope all of you have been on the trails around here or ridden motorcycles. I know some of you have ridden motorcycles through these mountains and, and all that kind of stuff, and that's, and that's important. I have trails, trails that go right behind my house, and I think we need to maintain those and keep them safe.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll also have two minutes. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I have it, thanks. So I believe it should be state-controlled. I think nobody like, nobody like our state will be able to understand the complexities and the best use for those, for those lands and recreational opportunities like our state would.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have an additional sixty seconds if you would like.
I think I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Haddock, same offer for you, sixty seconds if you choose to take it.
I'm good, thank you.
Moving on to our next question then. What plans do you have to stimulate economic growth and support local businesses? Mr. Haddock, we'll start with you on this one, and you will have two minutes.
Well, economic development is kind of my, my specialty. And I'm actually really intrigued by the land that was being purchased over by Ridge Road for the purpose of that industry. And I, I went and toured Blue Sky Energy and listened to what they have, and they just need more coal and that more opportunities to expand their plant, which uses the coal in many other ways, not in just to burn, but in creating graphite and many other wonderful, you know, wonderful utility that I think we could use in our society. Those are my highlights. I also have been pretty active in the, the chamber and really, really love anything to do with business and economic development. That's, I, I, I view that as our solution. Because if we don't replace the jobs that we've lost, then how do we get back our tax base that we once had?
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have two minutes to answer the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
I think I can do it this time. So, economic development is, is, is very important in Carbon County, as we all know. We're, we're a smaller county. What are we, 19, 20,000 people, I think? And, and we need to keep that. And I think we can, we can do economic development. But, but in my mind, as I've seen with, with the companies that I've worked for, it, it needs to be in control. We need to look at, like I said, take a 50,000-foot overview of what we're doing. The Business Park, I agree with, the Business Park along Ridge Road, I think is great. There's a lot of stuff that goes on out there, my old company's along that route, and, and they're doing all kinds of things that I think they would ever do right now, and it's important. We have such a great infrastructure here. We have, and you've seen the traffic coming through here now. It's a shortcut between 70 and 15. So we have a lot of truck traffic. I wish they would improve the roads, of course. And we'll get there eventually, I think. But we have transportation, we have rail, we have an airport with a genuinely long runway that could bring some flights in here that would benefit our county. So we have this wonderful infrastructure, and I would like to see us take full advantage of that. But again, like I say, we have to be controlled. I know we've, we've got, we've had water issues in the past. So we want to be, make sure that, and, and also the other part of that is, is if we're going to bring economic development here, we have to make sure that people have jobs here to come here. We want them to come here and have jobs. And, and the people that we've, that my old company has brought in from other places, they love it here. They, they moved in from places back east, California, and all kinds of stuff. And they just, they just really, really like it here. Once we brought them here and, and found housing for them, which we were sometimes lucky enough to do, other times we weren't. But that's important to make sure that we, we do economic development and that we do it in a controlling way so that we don't overdo it, right?
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll have an additional 60 seconds to answer that question if you would like it.
Yeah, I do have one comment. I, I do agree. We, we cannot, when I'm talking about economic development, I'm not, we're not talking about bringing thousand jobs in the area and, and ruin everything that we've worked so hard to build. Part of the rural beauty of our area is the fact that we do have some agricultural land and things. You, you can't just grow that anymore, by the way. You know, once you till it up, and it, it takes years sometimes to get these fields back. But the second thing that I wanted to mention is the importance of growing the economy from within. Sometimes we focus so much on enticing people from outside the, the area, and instead of focusing our attention on growing the, the businesses within, they're the ones who already have the roots, they have the, the staying power. They're going to be here for the long haul.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have an additional 60 seconds if you would like it.
You know, and I agree. And, and when we hear about companies that are getting ready to leave, I think we should step in as, as the commissioner and just see if there's something that we can do to maintain that. There's been some, some businesses that have left here and for economic reasons, I believe. And I think it would behoove us to just at least go in, sit down with them, find out why they're leaving, see if there's anything the county can do to help.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. We'll start with you on this next question. How do you plan to collaborate with other governmental agencies, nonprofits, and community organizations to enhance county services? You'll have two minutes.
Okay. So as far as other governments go, you know, I have friends in, in the basin, in those counties up there, the two counties up there, and I have friends in Sevier County. I have friends in Emery County, and, and I have contacts in all the, in our, in our five county area here, just basically from the energy industry, right? So, and learning from other counties, I know that's a, a something that we should do, and I think we are doing, is meeting with other counties, find out how they do things, see if there's anything that we can do together to help all of our counties. And so I think I'm able to work with, with other government entities. I've done that most of my life, working with other government entities. And I, I know how to communicate with them. I know what they like to hear and what they don't like to hear. And so it's been, it's been a challenge in some spots, but for the most part, it's, it's pretty easy for me to get along with just about anybody I talk to and present my, myself in a way that, that people will want to talk to me. So, working with government agencies is, is going to be really easy. And tell me the second part of the question.
Second part of the question was collaborate with governmental agencies, nonprofits, and community organizations to enhance county services.
Okay. So that's a local thing. So the, the nonprofits and the other county organizations are a huge part of our county, and they're important to work with. And I think there's, there's opportunities for everybody there. I've, I've donated to, to some nonprofit organizations, some charities and things like that. And I think there's, there's room for us to, to work together. And, and I have a little bit of work together with some of those groups and, and try to enhance things and, and bring funds into their causes. And we've had some success with that. So I think that's important as well, to, to make sure we can just work together. And that's, I, I think that's the biggest thing, is just being able to communicate, look at everybody's wants and needs, and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll also have two, two minutes to answer the question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I think I, I've got it. Thank you. So for me, we're already part of many of those nonprofits and organizations, you know, being part of the United Way and the Eastern Leaders Academy I was telling you about, and a few others, that we're already here to help promote our area. And in all those interactions, it helps, it helps me to, to make acquaintances and also understand where each of them are coming from. It's so important is the, you know, Socratic method, right? To, to really understand somebody and their position before you try to tell them what your position is. And I think it's essential, not just in working with nonprofits, but also in gov, especially in government agencies. And hopefully we can foster the, the strengths and the friendships and, and fellowship that we've had with the other counties in our surrounding area, that the county's already doing. Because I think there's no way we can solve these big issues on our own. We have to work together. And in order to work together, we've got to, we've got to be able to be a better listener to their, to their wants and needs, and then we can piece it together as we realize we have that common goal. Like I said, our, our county's been frustrated with the high taxes, but if you listen to the other surrounding counties, dealing with a lot of the same things.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will have an additional 60 seconds to expand or respond if you would like it.
Okay. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Mr. Haddock, the same opportunity goes out to you. 60 seconds if you would like it.
I'm good. Thank you.
Now, before we get into our final question of the evening, I would like to take the time to thank both of you for taking the time to come talk to us. This was a very enlightening discussion that we've been able to have here today. We'd also like to thank the campus of Utah State University Eastern for letting us use their beautiful facilities. I'd also like to go back over some voting information that we went over at the start of this event. Early voting for the 2024 general election will be conducted at the Carbon County Administration Building in Price, in the downstairs conference room and atrium during the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. beginning Tuesday, October 29th through Friday, November 1st. Registered voters can request that ballot be mailed to them if they fail to receive one through October 26th. October 25th is the last day to register to vote without having to vote provisionally. Voters wanting to register will need to show a valid form of photo identification that shows name, photograph, and current address, or two different forms of identification that show name and current address, for example, a utility bill or a bank statement. In-person voting for the general election will begin on November 5th, 2024, at the Carbon County Administration Building from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Now, moving on to our final question of the evening. We'll start with you on this one, Mr. Haddock, and you will have three minutes to answer. Why should the residents of Carbon County vote for you?
That's a good question. I think it's because I, I care. And I, I don't mean that lightly. I think my actions speak louder than the words. I've had to put my money where my mouth is. In that, I think the best way you can tell what kind of a job I've been doing is by looking at what I was doing before I even thought of running as a commissioner. Because if I'm a part of those boards and doing what I can to be an active and involved and volunteering our time early before this, then I think I'll, I'll be able to do a greater job when I'm able to spend more time working on it. So the, the best predictor of future behavior is past behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have three minutes to answer the question. Why should the residents of Carbon County vote for you?
Okay. First, first I want to start with thanking everybody that's here today. Thanks for taking your time to spend with us. This is the first time I've met Jared. He said I could call him Jared. So this is the first time I've met him. It was a pleasure of meeting you, sir, finally, after all these months and stuff. So, anyway, I think for me, it's, I am, you know, like, like I've already said, everything that I've done in my life for the last 50 years, it just kind of dropped me into this spot right here. I have some wonderful experience when it comes to the different facets of what we do here in Carbon County. I grew up here. I was born and raised here. I've been here a long time. I, I think I really understand this community and this county. I've spent time in all the municipalities, up in the mountains, and, and just like we all know, and like Mr. Haddock's already said, this is a great place. This is a wonderful place. And I want to be able to maintain that and keep going with that. You know, there's tourism and things like that. But I think for the most part, for me, why I'm asking for people to vote for me is, is my experience, again, has led me here. I know how to communicate with people. I make myself available 24/7. That's just what I'm used to. And I think that's what, that's important to people that live in this county. And I want to see us grow. I want to see us grow in a controlled manner. And I want to be able to do this job. And again, my promise is that I will be there full-time. I'll be available full-time, and I'm not going to be doing anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. Mr. Haddock, you'll have an additional 60 seconds if you would like it.
Yeah, just one other, just one other thing I think I wanted to point out is that, you know, I'm just, I'm an outside-the-box thinker. And it's just, just the way I was. I don't know why I was always born that way, think as an entrepreneurial mind. And so sometimes that's where I come with the tagline, you know, of a fresh perspective is, is really what that means, is, is that I can kind of look at something and, and see, see things that other people don't see. So most of my career has been created based on doing things that other people didn't see any value in. And, and as I've gotten older, the biggest thing that I care about now is, is about having a meaningful impact, to really impact. And, and that's where I see this position.
Thank you, Mr. Haddock. Mr. Palacios, you will also have an additional 60 seconds if you would like it.
Okay. Just one last thing for me too. I've been here a long time. I, I grew up here, family's been here a long time. I've, from the time I was in grade school, I have watched this county, and, and you will agree, we go up and down, up and down, up and down, right? And through my business contacts, my work and everything that I've done, we've, I've kind of learned how to roll with that and make sure that we're, keep moving and, and roll. Because there's challenges when we're, when we're riding the wave, man, we're great. But when we get off that wave and head down, then we've got to do some shuffling and, and do some things. I've been familiar with that my entire life. And I would like to think that I know, like I said, I can't foresee the future, of course, but I, I know some, some things that maybe we could do to, to kind of help us get through the low parts and then back up into the high parts. And I have good experience for that.
Thank you, Mr. Palacios. And again, we would like to thank both Mr. Haddock and Mr. Palacios for taking the time to come participate in this forum. This will conclude our, this week's slate of Meet the Candidates events. Starting next week though, on Monday, October 21st, we will be meeting with the candidates for House District 67. That will be current incumbent Representative Christine Watkins and Democratic challenger Joe Christman. But until then, I'd like to extend a thanks to Jordan Buscarini and Ryan Piccolo for making us look and sound so good tonight. And until next Monday, October 21st, I'm reporting for the KOAL newsroom, I'm Aiden Mortensen.